Mr. Placko, can you call roles?
Laura Krasinski.
Here.
Elizabeth Grassi.
Here.
Scott Fishel.
Here.
Tom Heck.
Here.
And Pardon.
Here. Can we stand for the pledge allegiance and when we're finished, I'll put remain standing for a moment.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I'm going to take a moment. Mr. Heck, who's on board, he's sitting beside me. He is unable better and he has a few words that he'd like to say.
So many of you are aware that we had a passing of a student who graduated in 2022. And I'd like to read the following statement. Last week, tragedy struck the Riverside community. Riverside High School class of 22 graduate Austin Schwank was killed at Camp Lejeune while serving in the Marines. On behalf of the Board of Education and the Riverside Local School District, I want to extend our greatest sympathy and heartfelt condolences to the family members and friends of Austin. I encourage the Riverside community to keep their thoughts with the Schwank family during this extremely difficult time. Here to tell us more about the young man Austin was, please welcome Riverside Campus Staff Member, Mr. Brad Allen.
Good evening, Riverside Board of Education and Riverside Community. My name is Brad Allen, currently the Lamuth Band Director, or John R.W. Band Director, former Lamuth Choir Director. I have been honored to be an educator for 20 years this year. One of the most wonderful highlights of teaching that no one tells you about is the long-term relationships that we get to build with our students. You get to see them grow up, build families, and do some amazing things in their lives. Unfortunately, the downside to this that also no one tells you about is the loss of one of those amazing students, as happened to our community this last week. I was privileged not only to have Lance Corporal Austin Schwank as a middle school student, but was able to maintain a connection with him as I moved on to the high school, as he did at the same time. While I did not have Austin in class at the high school, he did say hello and smiled every time he passed in the hallway. He routinely stopped and gave me updates on his life, how school was going, how the family was. It was always great to catch up with him. I remember the day he told me he officially enlisted in the Marine Corps. This had been a dream he shared with me as a middle school student and held on to it every single day. He was ecstatic to have finally done it. However, the thing I most remember about Austin was his dedication to helping others. Austin was one of the youngest challengers to take on the 24 and 24 Challenge, a fundraiser to help benefit children with life-threatening illnesses. I myself have taken on this grueling event with Austin, and he was an inspiration every step of the way. He would encourage others to keep going and remember why they were doing this event. There's not a moment I can't remember in all 24 hours, staying up and running and being just extremely tired. He didn't have a smile on his face. He didn't have a high five for somebody going by to say, hey, keep going. You're doing a great job. If anyone followed the social media around him this week, you can see Austin was an inspiration to all the adults in his life around, as well. There were a ton of Austin memories shared from various circles and communities Austin was a part of, even some I didn't realize he was a part of myself. Lance Corporal Austin Schwank was an amazing young man with a heart of gold. The world needs more people like him in it, and he will be greatly missed. Thank you.
Can we just have a moment of silence, please? Thank you. So on behalf of the Board, I'd like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I'd like to remind everyone that this is the meeting of the Board of Education in public for the sake of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the Public Participation section of the agenda. First thing on the agenda is approval of minutes. Make a motion to approve meeting minutes from September 28, 2023, and October 10, 2023. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Placko, can you call the role?
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Laura Krasinski.
Aye.
Elizabeth Grassi.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to Special Reports.
Well, thank you. We have two tonight. Really excited and great to have a great crowd. Our first up is Dr. Bassett in Lamuthville. Down.
Down.
Down. All right, great to see everyone. Chris Bassett, Principal of Lamuth Middle School. Those of you guys who don't know me, I was at the high school for a long time before this, 17 years before this, as a teacher for about 13 years, and then Assistant Principal for three. I'm very excited to be at Lamuth Middle School and excited to be here to talk about Lamuth Middle School. And I can tell you, going to a different building, one in which I got my career started, I was a teacher for my first year, it's very neat to be back 18 years later and see the building just through new eyes. And there are so many wonderful people, from our custodial staff, to our secretaries, to our wonderful food service people, our teaching staff, and of course, our students and our parents. So today, we're going to talk about a few of the great things that are going on at Lamuth Middle School, and it was very difficult for me to think about what we wanted to spotlight here today, because there's so many things we could talk about. But we're going to spotlight something today called our Fab Lab, our fabrication lab, at Lamuth Middle School, which I think really stands out as something unique that we're doing in the district. So I'm going to start by talking a bit about really what we're doing at the campus, or at the building, I should say. I want to give everybody an update on where we're going and what we're doing. And one of the things that coming from the campus here, I wanted to really develop a sense of community. And it sort of hit me when I first got into the position, I was thinking about, okay, what's going to be our theme for the year? And I know Dr. Rotino enjoys a good theme, and I thought to myself, my goodness, one community, let's look at the playbook. This is the first time that all of our students are coming together, right? Our Riverview families, our Parkside families, our Buckeye families, right? And we have, of course, our Melrange families, and then our new students, all coming together for the first time. And so I thought, my goodness, this has to be our rallying cry here. We are one community. And I think for the time that I'm here, I don't know if we need to change it. I think that's what we're doing every single year, when we bring in those new students for the first time, as sixth graders, and then, of course, we send them off very quickly up into the eighth grade after only two years at the school. So when you think about what we're doing at the school, we've spent a lot of time talking about this idea of one community. I want to give some examples of what we're doing to really showcase all of that. So when we think about one community, I wanted to share some of the ways that we're really trying to showcase what this one community means. And I think it's really a big part of what we do every single day. I always believed that when we adopted our culture playbook many years ago, as part of that process, we really needed to take it off the wall and put it into our hearts and our minds, right? How do you do that? Well, you have to live it. So the idea here was, how are we going to live the culture playbook? So I wanted to give everybody a few examples here today of how we're living the culture playbook, in no particular order, but I wanted everybody to see what we're doing. So anyone who's heard of PBIS before, that is something we are working on, Path of Behavior Intervention and Supports. We are using a program called Live School. And Live School is a system in which teachers have on their computers or on their phones, they can award Live School points when students really showcase these culture playbook behaviors. And then students can take those points, they can sort of cash them in for certain events, for certain things that they can do. We had a nature walk at lunch the other day. We've had kids go out and do ice, or snow cones at the point of ice. We've had times in which students can purchase certain items from our Live School cart. There's really cool things that kids can do with these points, but it really gets them thinking about how they can really showcase the behaviors of the culture playbook and how we can recognize them as we go forward. We have building expectations for the entire building, from our cafeteria to our buses, to our classrooms that are posted around the school. Those are all tied to the culture playbook. So what does it mean to do the right thing in the cafeteria? What does it mean to do the right thing on the school bus? And we've gone over those in our class meetings, and our teachers are going over those in advisory and throughout the day. And we're constantly reminding them over the announcements of what does it mean to do the right thing or be better every day. In our advisory lessons, we've also been able to talk about some of the ways that students can help transition into the building. We want to make sure that students can understand what it's like to go from an elementary school to a middle school, because it is a big transition for our sixth graders. Tomorrow, we're actually going to unveil our first round of Students of the Month. Parents got some emails today, which was exciting, so I got to send those home after school today. And it's very neat for us to see those students being recognized. And Those Students of the Month will recognize via our nine culture playbook behaviors on a 10-point Likert scale, strongly agree to strongly disagree in how those students are doing in their classes and around the school building. So a very kind of objective way to measure how our students are doing and how they're showing those behaviors in the school. We also have had a, what we call a kind of a postcard drive. I think after this week, we will be pushing over 250, maybe close to 300 postcards that we've sent home, culture playbook postcards that teachers have filled out, showing all the great things and telling all the great things that the students are doing around the school. And I know for me, as a parent in the district, I've gotten a few of those home for my daughter. They go right on the refrigerator. We talk about it at dinner. It's an exciting thing. And just a little thing like that can make a real difference for a child as they see what their teachers think about them, hear what their teachers think about them, all right? We just started this last week, a sixth grade transition program. Every Monday, bringing in the Effective Leadership Academy to talk about how to be a better leader, how to transition to the sixth grade from the elementary school, and what does it mean? And what are you saying to others? And how are you treating others? And I think it's a really good program for our students to understand what it means to get used to the middle school environment. Lastly, the last couple of things, we also have started our Staff Stars recognition. So not only are we recognizing our students, but recognizing our staff. I think it's important that we recognize our staff superstars in the building. We have two of them here today that are going to be talking to you about the Fab Lab, and we want to make sure that our staff are recognized because they're doing great work too. And then just a couple of other things, community partnerships and events. We have a few key events that are coming up. We just are launching a partnership with the Concord Recreation Department. We have an event coming up next Saturday, which is very exciting, so we're trying to reach out to our local communities. And then we just sent out surveys to our students and our parents as far as how things are going during the first quarter. You know, what can we do better? What are we doing well? And it's been really neat for us, kind of some aha moments of thanks, my goodness, that really is making a difference with our families or our students. And, okay, here's some things we can really work on, because I think transparency is key, and we need to know how we can get better every single day. Art to transition. So one of the things that I think I want to share with you today that's important is, when we think about all the great things that are going on at Lamuth, and thinking about all these things that I just shared, we are really seeing some really great output and some really great results with this. Our student behavior numbers have improved, our chronic absenteeism, so our absence rates have improved over the last, when I look at the last couple of years. And of course, via the surveys, we're really finding out some great things that are happening. So I'm happy to have some data to support sort of this culture playbook approach that we're taking, and I love using that there. And one of the things that I think is making a huge difference with our students is this Lamuth Fab Lab. So Fab Lab is short for Fabrication Lab. These are tools that some of you may have never heard of before, or maybe you have, but they are now existing in our school space. Things like 3D printers, we have laser engravers. It's actually a laser that engraves on certain types of materials that you have. And then a vinyl cutter, which we can make those cool stickers for your car, which is kind of cool. We can make yard signs, all kinds of things with these tools. But the key is, the kids are designing and creating in that space. And what we're excited to share with you all is that every student is able to touch this equipment every single year, in both the sixth and seventh grade. So we're embedding this into our technology classes in both sixth and seventh grade, and they're on a 12-week trimester rotation, so every kid's going to be able to cycle through there. We're scaling it, are going to be scaling it to our art classes, which they're thinking about some ways that they can include it. And then our future thoughts are to scale it up even to some of our other classes, which is fantastic. So we're kind of in our like Phase 1 to Phase 1.5, I would say, of our Fab Lab. It's a work in progress, but we're very happy to have that. We are using the design process, which the students are going to talk about here in just a minute, to really create their own products. And then we're using things, some of you may be familiar with things like Adobe Illustrator. We're also using Tinkercad. Tinkercad's kind of a Chrome-based SolidWorks for any of you that maybe have worked in the engineering field. So they're doing real-world, using real-world programs here to develop and create the things that they have in their space. What I love about the classroom environment, and the teachers will talk about this, I'm sure, it is a complete student-centered, teacher-facilitated classroom, all right? And if you don't understand kind of what I'm saying right there, that means that, yes, the teacher is there to help provide direction, but they're not the only person that's giving instruction. The kids are helping each other. They're working in groups. The teacher's coming around and giving gentle nudges, hey, what do you think about this? What about this? Try this. And then the students are going back to the drawing board and working that design process. So I love that that classroom, if you were to go into one of our classrooms, it's actually a double classroom space. If you think about two classrooms being put together with a divider, it's an open space. The kids are working around the room with these machines, and then the teacher can be helping them all the way through. And then lastly, we have had some professional development for our staff in all of this machinery. And I love that these are teachers who have taken their own personal time over the summer to travel to Lakeland's Hive. I don't know if any of you have ever been out to the Hive there at the campus, to learn how to use this equipment. So you've got teachers that, in my opinion, are going above and beyond, and that's why I believe they are our staff superstars. Here's some of the equipment that we have in the lab here. You can see there, on the left-hand side is our vinyl cutter there. In the middle there are 3D printers, and then on the right-hand side is our laser engraver. And it was kind of cool for us, actually, to go to Lakeland, which has this really big Makerspace Fab Lab. It's the same equipment that they have there. So we have within our own school, cutting-edge type stuff that's being used in larger-scale Makerspaces and also our Fab Labs. So it's very exciting to see that. So at this point, I've talked enough, I know. I do enjoy talking, so I have to stop. We do have our Staff Stars here. Mrs. Rudy is able to talk about our technology classes and what those look like. And also, then we're going to be hearing from our students. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our teachers.
Thank you. Come on, guys, I keep this alone.
I'm Dr. Grassi, why don't we line up over here? So I am, this is Mr. Rudy. I am the sixth-grade technology teacher. I am super excited this year. I like changes and different things and not always doing the same thing. And having this new equipment in our school is so much fun. So student-led is an understatement. Our students have led this project. They decided what teachers they wanted to talk to. They decided what their project was going to be, how they were going to design it. So they were super amazing, and I'm super proud of them. The one community pursuing greatness and getting better every day is a sign that one of the kids made. So they are really embracing that statement. All right, our first group.
Hi, my name is Olivia. I was the group's designer. We used a 3D printer to make a nameplate for a teacher, Ms. Smith. We used green and white filament for the colors.
Hi, my name is Lila Barth. I was the group's communication supervisor, and we learned how to neatly and precisely send emails.
Hi, my name is Rosalie. I was the group's project manager. And one thing I love about 3D printing is that someone of any age, ability, or skill level can learn to do it.
Hi, my name is Hayden. I was the project manager, and I helped my partners whenever they needed it and made sure that they were doing what they were supposed to.
Hi, my name is Amelia. I was the communication supervisor. We loved sending the emails. It was a fun job because you got to send the information from the project to the teacher.
Hi, my name's Evan. I was the communication supervisor. I emailed the teachers to see what we, or what color they needed and what they wanted.
Hi, my name's Yorabi. I was the project designer, and I used Adobe Ocean to create the sun.
Hi, my name's Lexi, and I was the project manager. And what we loved most about our project is that we each got a role in it.
So that is my group. That's my sixth graders.
And on the screen, just so that you can see, we enlarged these so you can see some of their designs. What I love also about this whole piece is that when we talked to the students and said, hey, who would be interested in being a part of this presentation? Look how many students showed up. And that is a testament to what's going on in the classroom. It makes my heart flutter just thinking about it. But they're really working hard, and I just love the work that they're doing. So here's some examples that the last group was holding up. You can see, the project was called Happy Teachers. And basically, they took orders from their teachers, and they asked, you know, what would you like? For maybe a hall pass or a sign. They created a sign for me, and the students all had to communicate with the teachers. They had to email. They had to ask questions. They visited my office. Oh, where would you like the sign? You know, all these different things. So they had to work on not only their design skills, but their communication skills. And I thought that was a fantastic piece all the way through. So here's a few more examples of the ones that you just saw the students talk about. All right, on seventh grade.
Hi, everybody. I'm Mrs. Amos, the seventh-grade teacher. Student-led, I'm going to piggyback off of what Mrs. Rudy said, absolutely for our project, I'll tell you about it in a minute. But I also wanted to add, they're the first ones to be in this space, and that's never easy. And they were just incredible. Not only a little bit of bravery required, but lots of patience with machines, with Mrs. Rudy and I, as we learned. And they were gracious and just fantastic leaders in that way. So student-led project, leaders in terms of the way you handle being the pioneers also. Our seventh-grade project was to create a product that could be sold, sold in our Live School store. It's points that they have as part of that PBIS or given as an award. You'll see a couple trophies in there to Lamuth students. So the Lamuth students are going to be the ones that are the recipients of these. We have the teachers in the sixth grade, the students in here. What I was so impressed with them was we had them go through a business plan. So they had to really think real-world, think like entrepreneurs, look at the audience of their products, you know, how to make their products unique, how could they future-expand their products? And I'm feeling good about our future people. They're incredible. I mean, really, really stepped right into it and did an excellent job. So without any further ado, I will hand it off to them.
Hello, my name is Seraphina Gilchrist. We made a Riverside-themed keychain, if you see here. I loved the learning part about CAD software and problem-solving. And I also figured out how to design our products using only one pigment color on the printer.
Hi, I'm Grace, and I made a Riverside keychain using Tinkercad. I learned that you have to work hard to overcome your challenges, and I loved using CAD software to make this keychain.
Hi, my name is Tyler Orblazowski. We used Tinkercad software to make our keychain design. Then we sent it over to the printers to get printed. We learned how to manipulate the pieces to make different shapes and different sizes that we needed.
Hi, I'm Declan Riley. I 3D printed a trophy using the Tinkercad software and a 3D printer. I learned how to use Tinkercad, design something, and take it to a 3D printer for it to be printed. What I loved about it was, it was just fun to use the software, design it, and watch it come, become this.
Hi, I'm Matthew. I made a typing trophy. I learned how to use Tinkercad and how to give it to actually make on a 3D printer. I really liked how we could actually like make something on a program that could actually really become a real thing.
Hello, I'm Valentina Diaz. I made a t-shirt and a sticker design. I created the design on Google Draw and Sketchpad. To put the design, we used a machine called Vinyl Cutter. Something I loved in the process was the business plan, as it stretched my abilities and understanding of how to create a design.
Hi, I'm Lexi, and I made a sticker that shows up when this is trying to be one community with the vinyl cutter. One thing I learned is that AutoDraw is a great tool to use when making sticker designs. Something I loved about the sticker is how it turned out.
All right, great job, students. Very proud of all of you. That's tough getting up in front of a crowd like you, I know, so I appreciate that. What a good practice that is tonight, too, to work on, work on those things. So as you can see, there's a lot of great things that they had to say about the Fab Lab, and we're very excited to continue to scale up, not only our production, but also thinking about some different equipment that we can put in there. We're thinking about some different ideas for the future, maybe looking at different spaces, talking about some different pieces of equipment, different products that we can create, and also some partnerships as we go forward. So some really cool stuff with the Fab Lab, for sure. All right, my last piece that I'll finish with, just, I always love a group call to action. You know, one of the things that I always, I tell the students, I told the staff this year, it's something I personally believe in too, is that every year, when I start the school year, I try to make it my best year of that. And when I think about what we're doing at Lamuth and the data that we're looking at, the output, some of these programs that we're doing, I think we're well on our way, and I'm very proud of where we're going. And so I appreciate everyone listening tonight and being a part of this, and students, again, I'm so proud of you. And thank you, teachers, for inspiring the students and getting them so interested in all this. It's wonderful to see them, so thank you. We're not away yet. We want to, first of all, ask Mrs. Amos and Mr. Rudy to act up here.
And the kids.
And we'll wait, we'll watch them first. Mrs. Amos, we'll first represent you each. And I can say, this presentation is truly actually special to my heart, too, as I spent nine years at Lamuth prior to leaving for a couple of them returning home. But I think truly, Dr. Bassett just can't say enough about how great these two are. They're phenomenal.
I have to say, though, the kids' projects were great, and to hear the words they're saying, and other project managers, they're really near and near to my heart, so great job.
And I think Mrs. Grassi actually wants a Best Side Riverside shirt or something.
I'm just totally thrilled with all the, their job titles. Like, that was super awesome, because those are real job titles. Like, those are really real job titles out there, and the fact that you guys had to do a business plan is very nice.
That's fantastic. So come on up, kids. We want to get your picture and brag about you and show everyone how great we are. You guys did set the record for most students for distance to boarding. We have a flag in the front row and a center. We're going to end it, yeah.
Shouldn't they, yeah, go down? Go on your knees. Can you see everybody?
We got the tallest ones in the front. You've got to switch, you've got to sort of find, you know, taller and back. And make sure you smile, get off the camera. All right, one, two, three. Perfect. All right, well, good luck. Kids and parents, thank you so much. You're welcome to stay, but we also want to see you. You've got other things to do. Next up, another one we're really excited to have is Mr. Andre, who's going to talk about transportation. The year's been going, we had some challenges beginning the year, but under Mr. Andre's leadership for this first year, kind of really got those under control. And our moving forward, if you're ready, I'll charge you.
Yeah, so I had the opportunity to edit this slide deck, and then I guess I really should have moved mine in front of the Lamuth presentation there. That's kind of hard to follow. Yeah, Kyle Andre, I'm the Director of Transportation here at Riverside. Super excited to be in this role. I've been here at Riverside, this is my sixth year. Obviously, moving from the teaching role over to transportation full-time, but super excited. And we have so many great things happening in the Transportation Department this school year. Obviously, over the last few years, ever since, you know, COVID hit us, we've had consistent challenges in our Transportation Department, as well as Transportation Departments, you know, across the state, across the country, you know, everywhere. It is difficult. It's a difficult job to be a bus driver, to supervise bus drivers, and to, you know, really keep everything up and running consistently. Some exciting things that we have going on at our department. We're consistently working to update and maintain our fleet. You know, over the last 10 years, we've done a really good job of this, and we're continuing to move forward. We have five special needs buses that are being delivered in either December or January, hopefully sooner rather than later, but they're coming. We also have five 78-passenger buses that are out to bid to hopefully receive next school year, as well as three 9-passenger vans that are out to bid. Obviously, streamlining our costs and helping to make sure that we have vehicles ready to go all the time and working on, you know, starting to kind of create some more creative solutions with vans and that sort of thing as a project that we're going to be looking at in the future here. We've also been working really hard at some routing solutions, streamlining and consolidating our routes. Obviously, being short-staffed kind of forces us to do that. We have to be able to get these kids to school, and we have to be able to get them home. So in a way, some of the challenges that we've gone through have been a little bit of a blessing in disguise, because it kind of gets my gears turning, as well as the rest of my office staff, our gears turning, and how can we do things more efficiently, and how can we apply these practices a little bit? and how can we apply these practices a little bit more in the future? As well as coming up with some atypical solutions, you know, we've been toying around with can we get a bus with Lamuth kids to go to an elementary school and grab some kids and actually get those middle schoolers home a little bit sooner or with the elementary schoolers on the bus? Just kind of working to, you know, just revamp what we're doing and figure out how are we going to make things work better, faster, um, and stronger more efficiently. On a more exciting note, um, we are consistently, I would say at this point, hiring drivers and transportation assistants in our department. Uh, since the beginning of the school year, we have had eight new drivers who have been hired. Five of those have started either this week or are starting next week. We had a new driver start on Monday of this week, we had somebody start today and we have three new drivers, um, coming in next week. This fills all of my routes, which is super exciting. I don't have empty routes anymore. And we also then have a few prospective drivers, um, who are in training as well. We were lucky enough to receive, uh, these eight drivers that we've gotten who are licensed and certified to drive, which is helping us to, you know, um, come up with a very short-term solution and just get buses moving and get kids going where they need to go. Uh, but now we also have some drivers in training to continue to, um, back ourselves up, have more subs, um, and just more drivers available when we need them. Uh, we also have had two new aides that have started since the beginning of the school year. Um, so it's exciting to be able to see that staffing is not as much of a, um, it's not as much of an issue as it was just six, seven weeks ago. So it's exciting, it's taking a load off of not just my plate, but all of our drivers, all of our assistants, um, are, you know, seeing their workload lighten up a little bit, which is making everybody's lives a little bit easier. Uh, perhaps one of the biggest changes so far that we've seen in the department this year, um, is just a really strong boost of morale. We're seeing our culture come up. People are happy to be at work, you know, one of the things that we've been talking about just in the short time since the beginning of the school year is how much of a flow in and out of the office we have with drivers and assistants, you know? There was a point in time where people weren't really coming into the office because they knew they would come into the office and get bad news. Hey, I need you to take these extra stops. Hey, I need you to stay a little bit longer and do extra. Um, and it's, it's taxing. We have a really strong team, we have a really excited team. I would say actually a little bit too excited sometimes between the hours of nine thirty and ten thirty and one thirty and like two o'clock, I get just about nothing done in the office because there are so many people in there and it is so loud and everybody's so happy to see each other. Um, I have always been an open door kind of person. I'm slowly becoming a closed door kind of person for at least a little bit of that time, so I can get some things done, um, during my time in the office. But things are happening, exciting things are happening. We're moving in a positive, forward direction. We're excited to continue pushing and seeing how far we can, we can take that, um, take that wave of, of energy.
One of the things is I'm looking forward to the day when, um, Pallas doesn't have to drive, maybe just focus on directing. Uh, we're getting close.
We're getting close.
So I think it's going to be a good thing. I think we're going to really even go farther, so.
I mean, February next year, I expire, I can make it so that I can't drive it.
So, uh, Nat can do this for a special report?
Thank you.
Alright, so that brings us to discussion of old business. Um, I know I submitted a topic just, I completed the board self-evaluation. Everybody should have a copy of it. Uh, the goal would be that take it, review it, um, if you think there's any edits that need to be made, please let me know. I'll bring it back next month and the goal would be to sign it and, um, uh, prove it and then we can, uh, put it on all the record. Any questions on that?
Thank you for that, Pat.
There was no other old business submitted, so I just want to make sure there's other topics. Alright, and that brings us to new business. Um, so again, I had one piece of new business and everybody's folder, there should be a bylaw, um, 148. I also emailed this out earlier in the month, but, um, this is a bylaw that is typically in our, um, bylaws and policies and it is not in ours. Um, and it's in regards to public expression of members of and using, um, Riverside Local School Board when you're making those public expressions. So I'd like the board to consider, um, bringing this bylaw into our policies and procedures. I don't know if anybody had a chance to take a look at it prior.
Is this in our agenda tonight?
No.
Okay. So it's just for like a.
Just introducing it to you, seeing if there's any initial discussion.
I think this is very important to have as a part of our bylaws for sure.
Will this be in the policy update that we're going to do?
When is, I don't know, when is the next policy meeting?
We're going to have to look at our calendars today.
Okay. So we might be able to bundle it with all the other policy changes?
The goal, the goal is to have a, have a first reading in November and hopefully adoption in the summer.
So I, I guess I would give it up, Ellen, Ms. Harding kind of take it and if we push them together, we can, or if they go separate, I'll let you decide on that.
So make sure we talk today together.
Any other initial discussion on it?
Yeah, so I, just, just to, to make sure I'm understanding, so in essence, when you're, when we're speaking, we in part, we're just kind of going down a scenario where we're writing, say there's, there's some legislation we want us to support or what have you, or, uh, not support, that if we provide either verbal or written correspondence, that we would just say, hi, you know, Tom Hack, Riverside Board Member, I'm speaking on my own behalf. That's.
Just make it clear that, unless it's something we all agreed upon, obviously, then you can, yeah.
Okay, I mean, that's, I'll think about it some more, but that, I mean, I would argue with that.
Yeah, this is the, Neil actually provided this, so this was what is typically within, um, school districts, again, bylaws, so. Um, again, no other new business was, um, suggested at this time. I just want to make sure there's no other topics. Alright, and that brings us to the Board of Education Committee and Liaison Reports. First is Superintendent's Business Advisory Liaison. We do have a meeting on the calendar for the end of November?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't look at the date.
Uh, 30th, 30th.
Okay, so we will be getting back together, um, with, uh, community members, business owners within the community to discuss some more about the, um, portrait of a student and some other things, uh, that we walked away from, saying we wanted to come back, like what are the goals of the Business Advisory Committee? And make sure that we all are working toward the same thing. So, um, there'll be more of an update in December. Next is the Curriculum and Program Committee, um, in Alumni Association, uh, Mr. Fischel.
So, I'm the Alumni, we have the Hall of Fame Dinner, went very well, uh, well-attended, wonderful accomplishments and a lot of, I would say, excitement at the Hall of Fame Dinner. Uh, so, uh, that went well and, and, um, we have another meeting, I'll give an update as to where the Alumni Association is. We had a curriculum meeting and we covered that there's going to be some professional development, um, and our curriculum director, Malakar, said that that will be on November 6th and 7th. And there will be a personally, a Travis from the ESC of Northeast Ohio, is going to train the teachers how to evaluate scores in training. So anyway, there's, there's that. And then there's a, uh, an AI pilot program, which will be for AP, Social Studies, it will be History, Psychology and Government. And, um, what that will entail is, uh, this will, the AI will give students an immediate response feedback while they're doing their work on their Chromebook. Instead of a teacher having to oversee them and then help each student one at a time, students will have ongoing improvement or suggestions for improvement, uh, from the AI. And then, uh, our, our tech guy, John Rendwick, is going to be moderating the Chromebooks to make sure no information mining is occurring. So hopefully he'll, he'll be able to give us a complete report on that, that it's completely safe without data mining. And then, um, there will also be, let's see, there is going to be a data analysis, analysis protocol, which will help the teacher staff administration to determine how to use the info in their, each respective buildings. And the focus on teaching instead of how the dust are arranged and the shields, what used to have shields and that sort of thing. So, uh, that will be going on. And also on the AI program, uh, Chris LaBarr will be, uh, in, will be the teacher involved with that. And that is an update on the curriculum.
That brings us to Buildings and Grounds Operations, um, in Legislative Liaison, Mr. Hack.
Alright, so we had a Buildings and Grounds meeting on the, on October 9th. Uh, we got an update on the, the modular unit and Mr. R. Lessing does not appear to be here tonight, so I don't know if there's any update since then, but the bottom line is for the, the modular unit consisting of basically two classrooms is, is still on schedule as of the 9th to, to be in place in time from the beginning of the second semester at Buckeye. And still a lot of things to be done. We have to pour some foundations and other things for that. There's still work being done on the modular unit itself before it's actually delivered to Buckeye, but, uh, as of the 9th, things were moving forward. Um, tonight on the agenda, you're going to see that we are replacing some hundred lights and a few other items for the stadium. That is unfortunately, you can't replace them individually, you pretty much have to replace them all at the same time, so it's not usually expensive, but it is going to cost about, uh, thirty-six thousand dollars to do. But that will improve the lighting and, and, uh, the one thing that we had promised when we made the, the field, uh, all-weather, you know, all-weather turf, that we would get a lot of use out of it and by golly we are. So this is definitely money well spent to keep the, uh, the, uh, stadium useful, useful, uh, during all types of weather and all times of day and night. So I, I do have a question for Dr. Bassett. Bassett, uh, do you, so do you have heat in your, in your office now?
Do I have heat in my office? I sure do.
Yes, you do, that's good. Because when we talked at the Buildings and Grounds meeting, or apparently back to, uh, Dr. Ruttino's time, the, the principal's office at Lamuth did not have any heat.
It was a rite of passage.
That rite of passage has stopped.
I know, it drove me out of the office, it was so cold. Now it's too hot in there here. I try not to be there too much, so.
There, there you go. Well, but at least when you're there, you can be comfortable, if, you know, even if you have to open a window.
I agree, thank you. So, thank you for sharing.
Yes, I'm glad you heard that, that was done. And, uh, there's some other things that are going on, we're, we're certainly talking about, uh, in, in light of the evaluation of, of the campus and some of the other legacy buildings, um, we are going to have, uh, I think, are you going to talk about the bylaws yet?
I have a slide on that, we'll, we'll be short, but.
Terrific. So, so we'll have more information on that in, in incoming meetings. And then just for, so people know, the, uh, we are also planning to do a resurfacing of the track around the, the football field. It has been there for, uh, twenty-plus years, so we've gotten our useful life out, life out of it. And, uh, so we are looking to, to do that. It is a little bit complicated because we will have to not only take off the rubberized surface, which is what the, the athletes run on, but, uh, we'll also have to take off some of the asphalt as well, provides the foundation. And then putting that back in place, you have to wait six weeks for it to fully cure. And, and so trying to do it over the summer after graduation, it's, it's a little bit of a, a scheduling, uh, challenge, but we will figure that out and, and get that moving forward as well. I think those were the, the major things that I have. Mrs. Grassi, anything else that you wanted to bring up?
Uh, no, you covered, you covered it all down.
Mr. Hack, I have one thing.
Please.
Uh, the thirty-six thousand dollars for the lighting, and as Mr. Hack said, it's, it's, uh, field's well utilized. The public uses it a lot. So the thirty-six thousand dollars is very well spent.
Yeah, and, and the lights will, will last a number of years, I think, five to seven years. So anyway, not, not to belabor the, the point, but we will have better lighting at the stadium and it'll be worth, uh, the investment to do that. And with that, we, just a heads up, later in the, in the meeting, we're going to, as a board, we have a policy in place where the, the board needs to vote on the, uh, various legislation that's being proposed by OSBA, the Ohio School Board, uh, Association. And every year at the Capitol Conference, which is in November, um, there will, there are certain proposals that we voted on. And so rather than have the, the person who attends on behalf of the board vote their, their own mind, we will have a vote on that and, and that person will represent the, the board itself. So that will come up later under Buildings and Grounds. And that's all we got.
And that brings us to Policy Committee Booster Organization Liaison, Mrs. Harden.
Um, so for the Policy Committee, as Mr. Schluich said, we do need to make plans for a November meeting, so we'll make sure we do that before, um, we leave today, Mr. Hack, if we can, please.
Sure.
Um, Booster Organizations on December 5th at six o'clock is going to be the next meeting of our PTA, getting all the booster groups together in the, in the district, so hopefully have more information, but as usual, all of our students are busy with all kinds of good stuff, the, for our students and staff.
Thank you. Great, Superintendent's Report.
Alright, thank you. I hope it's a busy month for the schools and it is, um, National Principals Month and I'd be remiss if I didn't take a minute to thank all of our great building leaders and the opportunity to have to work with people who always put students first and kind of highlight that we're up, some are actually here today because they told me. So I appreciate that, uh, more than I know, but I appreciate all the work you do every day, um, truly, truly book, uh, one community, student grade, and it's getting better every day. We're, it's, it's a blessing to truly work with these individuals, so thank you for that. Also, um, I have, I had the fortune to attend a two-day personalized learning, uh, capacity-based learning conference for districts. We are part of the Transform Initiative, it's funded by, um, the Ohio Development, actually now the D.U. They, they made it through, they're the Department of Education workforce, uh, as that went forward, but they are, they put on, and they bring in a, uh, consultants to work with, uh, districts throughout, and that to kind of shift and, uh, shift the way we teach and our students learn. So shifted to more personalized learning, which follows in our strategic plan. Something really excited about, we were able to bring all of our principals and some of our other district leaders down, uh, to learn about how to kind of set up the conditions needed for a systemic change, so that we kind of continue to work throughout the year. Um, looking to kind of shift that, um, and get involved in our business, uh, Business Advisory Group as we look at that portion of graduate, what that looks like, you know, stakeholders involved and then as that drives the vision for what personalized learning looks at Riverside. So really an exciting conference to kind of have those conversations throughout with other districts as well, uh, down in Columbus, and we just came back, uh, last night, so we were done for two days and it was a great, uh, really, really wonderful conference, um, to be there. One of the things we want to highlight is we just, ODE just released, or the Department of Education, I guess it was ODE this time, when they just released the, uh, Special Education ratings, Riverside ranked the highest, which is meets requirements. But we met it, um, for their compliance standard with no actions required. Uh, we were four point oh and a four point oh, it's the highest rating, so something really for, uh, Ms. Lanning and her team, really kind of something to be, um, really proud of, because there's a lot of compliance goes with special ed, uh, along the way and I know, um, really happy to kind of hear that, especially with the recent audit that went through, but to see that the hard work has paid off.
That's awesome, congratulations.
I wish, I would love to take credit, but it really is the effort of the district staff because there are several different compliance indicators that are rated and it really takes everybody to meet each, each indicator, so.
Well, I would say thank you for that humility, but let me just, let me just add to everyone here that, um, I have spent some time in Ms. Lanning's office, uh, on a couple different occasions and, and in the first hour, I thought I got about two percent of what she does. And so I wanted to follow up so I could get to about three percent of what she does and it's a big job, so thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
I, I would like to, to add to that, I can say, I can tell you what's on our district report card, I can go through that line by line and everyone, I have no idea what this means, but I know she does a great job and I go in there and she just said, this is what we're doing and I trust her to guide us on the lane, she can, she can do it, so thank you, um, again, and great job. Athletic update, um, currently our girls, our, our girls volleyball, we're in the fall tournament season, our girls volleyball is playing their championship game in Manner. I just heard from, uh, Mr. Hall, they're currently down two games to none, two Manner unfortunately, uh, but hoping they can fight back, he's saying they're playing hard Manner, she's not missing anything. So we knew it was going to be a challenge on the way through, but, um, you know, hoping for the best for them, I think this is the district championship, so, um, district runner upset and then they, if they win this and hopefully they'll come back, um, and win it in five, they'll go on to the regionals next week. Uh, football hosts, uh, first playoff game of their campaign for state championship tomorrow night at seven. It is a home game against Maple Heights, they play Maple Heights once, but they play that team twice, they've seen twice in one year, it's a very difficult thing. So hoping that they're on point and, uh, ready to go for the second season. And finally, some cross-country news, uh, Megan Sullivan, Mason Lever and John Young get to compete and earn the way to compete at the regional cross-country meet, um, tomorrow at Borman High School, really excited about that and they make that out, they can go to the states, so really excited for them. Uh, hope they're wishing nothing but the best for them as well. Uh, I had a chance to attend Boo Fest this, uh, Saturday, uh, put on by our National Arts Society, it was an awesome event, I can't tell you, Kid, Kid Design, they, they turned Riverside, the halls of Riverside into a kind of a Halloween, uh, festival. There were a lot of people here, the actual media center turned into a kind of mini. There were a lot of people here. The actual media center turned into a mini haunted house with students kind of going through and trying to bring groups of students through and securing people along the way. It was, I couldn't stop laughing through it because seeing some, knowing some of the kids and kind of watching what they were doing in their costumes, they were great. And then throughout, even kind of seeing just the community come together, and nothing but great comics and how neat it was to see kids in their costumes, walking around, giving out candy, playing out kind of Halloween games. So really exciting. And, you know, our, the event raised around $1,600 for a charity. Amazing what our kids do. Kind of never cease to succeed. As Mr. Schluss said, we did have a Hall of Fame dinner this month. Great. I want to congratulate our newest members, Robert Moore, Michaela Hall Burris, Amir Jones, Becky Bartholomew, Joshua Grilla, and David Lotenschneider. That was a hard name to learn, but I got it. The the amount of credence that they read was super exciting. It was a wonderful event. Really need to kind of get to talk and move with some of these people. And, you know, kind of a little, Amir Jones will be speaking at this year's graduation. Really excited to have him. He did, he did accept it. We reached out to him, so he thought of his award, and he cleared his whole weekend. So we're super excited to have him return back home to speak to our students and how inspired they are. I can't wait to hear what he has to say. More on National Honor Society. The National Honor Society is a couple of weeks here. There are 52 new students inducted into the National Honor Society chapter on October 17th. Is the largest group to be inducted since 2005. Really a great group to hear, kind of see them from up. And I can tell you, as a parent, seeing this ceremony, I'm very proud of that, my own child being inducted. This one was so much more personal, and I really maybe kind of feel special for all the parents kind of who've read about them. Had a lot of pet lovers. Mr. Hall kind of came out to that and said, had a lot of pets, one of them had tarantulas. Really need to kind of see what they remain and kind of all of that. So it's an awesome thing to see our kids again being celebrated and running through it. I guess, and talking to Mr. Schrader, it's completely kid design, student design, that's the one. So really, future's bright for Riverside. I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about coffee. We got one more. Next Monday at Parkside is the last one. We have five and six. It was, it's been a really nice time to go out and just listen to community and talk to community and have some of those conversations. So we'll find a way to kind of hook them on a little more formally as as we go throughout. I think there's a productive way to kind of get out, get some of these focus groups, especially looking at things like facilities plan and some other stuff. Because having that community input along the way is really important. Depending on the building we were at, depending really on what the the themes kind of shifted into. The last couple were at Buckeye and here at the campus, both a lot more on facilities talk, facility discussion, kind of where we're going, what the mission is. So, you know, some of that that went on, I really appreciate it, all the community members who showed up. And no one drinks coffee, though, but again, it is a sick night, I know, so we might have to change the names and do something a little bit different, but I think it was a really good time to kind of have community and maybe in some other times, get some more football. Kind of preview, a few things go up. The National Honor Society Holiday Market is Saturday, November 11th, from 9:00 to 3:00 at the campus. If it's any like Boo Fest, it's going to be a great time. I guess it's packed from what I've heard, so local vendors, Riverside selling goods and products in time for the holiday, and it's open to anyone that comes, so just make sure you come out. And coming up soon, we have our Senior Citizen Night. That is November, Thursday, November 16th at 4:00 p.m. So we will host that there. Senior will receive a free meal prior to the performance of the fall play, Puffs. At 5:00 p.m., Puffs is a Harry Potter spin-off play. The play is open to the general public on November 16th, 17th, and 18th. After the play, if you want to come on Thursday, we do have a board meeting that night. So in a crowded, dead moment, I might be a little late. My daughter has the lead, so I'm going to sit and watch, and then I'll show up right after. So super excited for that, but that's coming up on the 16th. And that's the board.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to the Treasury Report and Committee Update. So Finance Audit and Personnel and Strategic Plan Liaison, Mrs. Grassi?
Sure. So we had a Finance and Personnel Committee meeting on October 19th, 7:30 a.m. Our first thing of always is personnel. We have been filling latchkey study hall monitors and transportation. So that's good to see that we've now got a full slate of transportation drivers and that they're coming in with their credentials already behind them, so that's good to have. We've discussed, as usual, our the board agenda items. Spent some time talking about state funding and our state payment reports that came in for the month of October are finally the actual, like what they are now actually going to be for the rest of the year. They kind of estimate those for the first couple of months of the year, and so we don't really know how that's all going to play out. But they're now in a final format, so we know what that's going to look like for the rest of the year. So we do have the five-year forecast coming up in November, so we didn't talk about that. But now that we have accurate data for the for the state funding, we can move forward with getting the five-year forecast done. So there's that. And part of that conversation that that we had about this funding update was the Dicted funding update and whether or not we're going to have to pay back any of the funds that we've had from previous years because of the changes in the way that they are accounting for that. But I'm not sure if that's been completed yet.
Hasn't been finalized, but it looks like things are promising that we don't have to pay back any of the funds.
Right. So so we'll keep an eye on that, and we'll see where that heads, and we'll let everybody know when we have a final word on that. Our audit began this past Monday, I think, now. So I know I got communication from the auditors that they have started the audit, and I actually got a questionnaire from them, which I've never gotten, so that was kind of interesting. I got that.
Yeah, there's a fraud questionnaire that now goes to all board members. It used to only go to the board president, but it does go to all board members. And they said if someone does not respond, they will be listed on a citation for not doing that.
So check your emails and make sure that you, I got it today. I've not, I've never gotten it before, so it did stick out like, hey, I've never seen anyone do it before. Was that, ew? So yeah, if you can, please make sure that you actually do do that, because those are audit points. And the more that they have to wait for people to to get that information back to them, they're going to continue to send it to you. And eventually, we're going to give them audit citations, so please make sure you fill it out. I'm sure it's, it's, it's only a few questions.
It's like four questions.
It was pretty simple.
Are you aware of fraud, any related property transactions? It's pretty, pretty basic. It could be a much more lengthier one, but I think for you guys, it's.
It's pretty basic, right. Yours is probably longer than that. So there's that. We did have a brief conversation about Ed Choice voucher program funding. And it was just a four-year information kind of a thing. That Ed Choice vouchers, when the school districts. You're going to give a slide? Okay, so he's going to read, he's going to review that. I just want to make sure that I reiterate, and and Mr. Placko can reiterate again when he does his slides, that K through eight in schools that get Ed Choice vouchers will receive $6,165, and for nine through 10, they get $8,407 per student, which we get, you know, $1,200 or, I don't, I don't, it's, it's $1,200, $1,250. So the thought process is if we got anything close to what the schools that are getting the state voucher dollars got, we would be extremely wealthy district. But we don't, and so that's just the way that the law is written, state funding is written. The good thing about it is that state state vouchers used to come, that voucher program, the funding used to come from the school district. And at least that is one positive that has come out of recent legislation in the past number of years, is that that money does not come out of our district budget anymore. So but it is still being funded from state coffers and your state tax dollars. So there's that. Mr. Placko provided some information on House Bill 187, which is making some changes to the property tax rules. Are you going to discuss that?
Yes.
Also, okay, so I'm not going to discuss that too much, but he, Mr. Placko did send some information and some, sent some advocacy things for us on behalf of the district to, Mr. Serino?
Yeah, Senator Serino.
Senator Serino, and I'm not sure who else he sent it to, but, you know, any, and any time that we have an opportunity to do some advocacy for those kinds of things that affect districts and tax dollars and how we get our funding is always a good thing to make sure that we continue to advocate for that in a positive manner. So we've asked Mr. Placko to continue to do those kinds of things. And so I think he did send that out to everybody, so that you can have a, take a look at what he he sent. So we talked about that, and that's about it. So that's all I have. I don't have any updates on the strategic plan, because we just keep living it, and we get it in our our district audit hack at every, every week. So we've got nothing on that.
Great. Mr. Placko?
Glad that the margin cleared this last meeting, whatever we got left.
Oh, no, next, it'll be, it'll be interesting next month when he does the five-year report.
Just to use some.
What's that?
We'll put it first.
Yeah.
We might do that first.
Yeah, special report.
So just some updates to start September 2023 financial report, which is usually every month approved on on our agenda, mostly posted website and in form docs. The total cash balance of all of our funds is just over $47 million, of which, which is about $30.5 million is our general fund. Our permanent improvement fund currently has $8.3 million unencumbered right now, so it's not already committed. By having, we fight that investment project will be fight the next month. So it's about $7 million right now. That's not committed to any projects or any other purchases at this point that's available for use. In our financial report, we, you know, September, we approve our annual appropriation, which is essentially our budget. And so now the financial report is now containing both appropriations and revenue estimates comparable we are throughout the year. Because in my world, we're currently in fiscal year 2024, so we are now three months into 2024 in my world. And so we're 25% through the fiscal year. Our revenue is at 38.9%. And that's because we're heavily funded by property taxes. We get two large settlements a year in basically August and March of each year. So we do our front up front, and then we go settle loans, we decline the cash balance. Then in February, March, with that grant, that helping in. Expenditures are currently at 23.3% of our, of our budget. And those will, that will slowly catch up throughout the year, because, you know, seven percent salary is going on right September 1st. So first two months of fiscal year, you have lower salaries, and salaries will up, and those will reflect throughout the year. Your salary benefits are large expenses. And our new health insurance rates go on effect of January, so you'll see that number slowly increase. Just a few other statistics. The revenue for the general fund for September was $1.5 million. That includes about $508,000 in state foundation payments that will upside the, the new current funding. We also have a Medicaid school program payment of $347,000, which was mostly from our 2021 cost settlement. We typically receive these in June each year, Medicaid implemented a new system, so they got behind. So this payment should have came last fiscal year, but it's currently in this fiscal year. The question is, will we get our next, our 2022 cost settlement in June and have a double payment this year without it delayed? And, yep, so that's all those forecasting, and there was a timing issue on that. For interest revenue, in September, we've, we earned $110,000 on our cash balance. We're currently getting 5.56% in our star Ohio account, our retro investment account, which has longer term investments at 3.14% overall yield, 4.72. Our expenditures for September is about 3.0, just shy of 3.9. State funding update. So if you recall, a new funding formula was implemented in the last state funding budget. So we are currently in year three of the phase of the Fair School Funding Plan. It's a, you know, right now, it's a six-year phase, and the legislature can't commit the future legislature to anything. So it's, it's unofficially six-year phase, and we're in year three. So it's a 50% phase in this year. Next year is 66.67%. In this funding budget, they updated the student enrollment numbers, they updated our local capacity, so updated tax valuations, updated income figures into this, and also the base cost they used. Basically, the state formula calculates the base cost of educating a typical child in Ohio. Last two years was based on 2018 figures. They updated to 2022 figures. Another change they made in this, if you recall, so they calculate this called your local capacity. And that's basically what share this district responsible for from the taxpayers of of that base cost to educate a child. And there was a, it used to be called the 5% floor, and we hit the 5% floor because this formula factors in income levels and property tax values, which we have to drop this 5% floor. They increased the floor to 10%. And I'll explain what that means on the next slide. It's kind of, I know it sounds, kind of sounds a bit rich right now, what I'm talking about. And then they increased the state share for transportation. It used to be 33%, it goes to 37.5% and 41.67% for 2025. So if you call in our prior discussions, essentially, our increase in state funding in transportation, and that's a bold point is why. Because they, they lower, they raised the floor up of what we give for transportation. I know that was probably very confusing. To make it even more confusing, here's the state funding report from the state of Ohio. So we get 24 payments a year, so this, these are numbers updated 24 times. The October number one payment is the first payment that reflects all of the changes in this two-year budget cycle. And so basically up here, there's, there's several categories we're funded. So we have base costs, that's your unrestricted funding, they use for open purpose. There's special education funding, there's disadvantaged pupil aid, there's funding for English learners, there's funding for gifted education. There's funding for career technical education, so we get a whopping $1,760 for career tech education. That goes a long way. That's sarcasm. So when you look at these reports, column A is what we call base funding. So what it is, is it basically, it ties back to fiscal year 2019, which was the last year we were on a formula in the state of Ohio, because basically in 2019 was the last year of a formula, 2020 and 21, things were frozen at the 2019 level. And then the last two years, when the first two years of the new state funding formula went into effect. And basically, there's a guarantee in place that says you're not going to get less funding than you did in 2019. And so column A is basically that, that base cost funding based on 2019. Column B is, if the Fair School Funding Plan was fully phased in, not the six-year phase-in, column B would be, this is what your funding will be. So column C is your phase-in. We're one of the districts that were phasing negatives to positives. Now, so column D is kind of what you're actually receiving this year. There's a guarantee in place that says you don't get less funding than prior years. So if you look at the total in column C is a reduction of $1,200,000. End line I gives you back $1,200,000 to keep you whole. Then you have your transportation funding, which is 1.6 million for total funding of $7.6 million. We could probably talk for days on what goes into all this, and I I won't go into those details. But when we compare what the October number one payment is to what the Legislative Services Commission was projected when they were doing the state budget, we are very close. I think it was off in 30 grand, which I thought was, you know, it was immaterial at that point. But luckily, it worked out the way we expected.
So just looking at the the fair funding, so we're halfway through the implementation of it.
Correct.
Can you just walk us through is if they, if the state would go through and give us the funding based on the, on the rules of fair funding? But they're, they're adding things back. So when they're done, are they adding things back, or are we looking at column C or whatever?
My understanding is the temporary, it's called temporary transition aid guarantees. Why they call it temporary, I don't know. But but essentially, as they say, you're not going to lose money, so but that's a future legislative decision, a future. I mean, for my entire career, all of the guarantees, whoever they changed the formulas, winners and losers, and they never anybody that lose funding. At one point, I think when Kasich was governor, there was a point where if your enrollment had dropped by a certain percentage, they would lower your guarantee 1% or 2% based on that enrollment drop. And that was the only time you could have lost funds, cowerled, it's been pretty level, it's not like increased. And there's not a community with our, you know, our, so I would expect us to stay on guarantee. There is, you know, we're part of the Life Quality Education. They're trying to advocate for a 20% floor. And so, you know, going from five to 10 was a move. If they can get to the 20%, that would be good for, for a lot of us that are in this situation. We actually be on a formula. If you recall, if you were to compare this to the state funding report from last year, column B, our calculated state funding, was about $1.7 million, and it jumps to 3.6 between the increase in the floor from five to 10% and the base cost inputs from 2018 numbers to 2022. So we're moving closer to being on the formula and off of guarantee, but it takes time. And so obviously, we don't know what the future holds. Basically, next fiscal year, the implementation goes 50% to 66%. So column C will, the, the, the reduction would get bigger, and the guarantee will get bigger. There'll still be a net zero there, but we'll see, we'll see the transportation part, because that's, that's what we'll see.
So not to belabor the conversation, but are there, so it sounds like there's no, for all of the districts, there, there, there's no quote-unquote loss of revenue? So not to deliver the conversation, but are there, so it sounds like there's no, for all of the districts, there, there, there's no quote unquote loss of revenue. Except for maybe the circumstances you're talking about decreasing enrollment.
That was on prior state budget.
That's not, that's not active today.
That's not active today.
Okay. So, so the, so it would seem, so I'm at, I guess the question is, there are districts that are benefiting from, from the fair funding formula, correct?
Yes.
And how much, do you have a, any insight as to how much or what, what that looks like?
Um.
And I know I'm catching you.
At one point, there was over three hundred districts on guarantee. I know that number's gone down with, in the current state budget, I don't recall what it is. There are a lot of districts that are on guarantee, but there are a lot of districts that saw a lot of benefit from this. It kind of depends on any of those circumstances. And actually, Aaron Robes, who was like the, the head of the state funding, honest form of education for the workforce. He actually went last, two years ago, when the formula, formula first came out and I reached out to him, ours was kind of long. He actually used ours as his example for all the presentations they stayed by that were someone going the opposite direction they could expect in the state funding. So, you know, essentially we're going to be on guarantee for a while. We'll see increases in transportation funding, um, and basically, you know, kind of see how future changes work and how it works.
But at this point, your, your assumptions in the, the last version of the five year forecast are, are holding stable.
Right. We, when I originally projected the projections for this year, next year, you know, at that time in May, we didn't want the state budget to be, so we pretty much projected a no increase. And we do have an increase in transportation funding, so we'll see the forecast get better. And in the future, we're, we're not kind of flatlining at that point. Obviously, we don't know how that will affect. And there's other pieces that go into it that, um, you know, property tax valuations, income levels, those change. That affects your state funding as well, so it's, it's very complex.
Many, many years.
Many variables.
Yeah. Thank you.
And this next slide, there's this kind of a summary comparing that far right column where we're actually funded at, um, our final figures from last fiscal year to this year. You can see all the numbers change. And basically this is where it's almost, almost the same, it's all forty two thousand, the budget factor and the transportation increase of two hundred seventy seven thousand. Can see total funding increase, uh, at around four hundred sixty six thousand. The state projections are four hundred ninety some thousands, it's close. And there's still, the formula gets updated twenty three times throughout the year. In January, it'll update with special transportation funding number, uh, based on according in August. So that number probably will be, so we're actually finding closer to what we projected before. Any questions on that prior before? It's, it's complicated and it's, you know, all these numbers change, almost gets the same number.
Right. I mean, it's like you're going through all these gyrations, but in the end, if you're on the guarantee, it, it doesn't, you know, your, your net position has not changed.
Correct. Basically, the transportation, which is outside of that, is what we saw.
Right. Which is substantial, actually.
Which is kind of ironic that, I guess I'll whack one more point, that based on this, that I feel like something wrong with the formula as you look at base cost per student. Our calculated funding is three point two million rounding. Transportation, which is only providing certain kids transportation to one point four, zero point six million. So it's a, a third of our funding, if you look at that way, then in half base cost would be transportation funding. Seems like, seems there's something wrong right there.
Right.
Um, as Mr. Rassie mentioned, we kind of talked about Ed Choice voucher program and what that kind of looks like. Right now, uh, large expansion of voucher programs, uh, and sort of as you mentioned, the, uh, the students who are in grades K through eight to qualify, um, we get six thousand one hundred sixty five dollar voucher to send to private school. If you're in grades nine through twelve, it's eight thousand four hundred and seven. And basically, I think they said if you're, it's based on four hundred and fifty percent of the property level. So if you're a family of four, I think that becomes like a hundred thirty five thousand. So it's, it's, so a lot of families do qualify for vouchers. When you put that in perspective, looking at our students, if, if we were funded like Ed Choice vouchers and got those voucher amounts, six thousand one sixty five for our K through eight students. And the high school voucher nine through twelve, eight thousand four hundred and seven. Our state funding would be twenty eight point four million compared to what we actually get just under, you know, seven point nine. So if that's a, you know, yeah, that's an increase in funding of twenty million dollars, we can probably reduce our property taxes any more than half, um, if we receive that funding from the state. So just kind of wanted to point that out with that perspective. I'm against the voucher program and I think it's not really against choice or just how it's working.
Have you still come out of our budget?
In the past, um, the, before the fair school funding plans were going back through fiscal years, when there were voucher districts, districts like Inglewood City, uh, Cleveland, things like that. Those voucher amounts came directly out of the state, out of the schools budgets. And, you know, if you're only, if you've got less than six thousand dollars a kid in your state funding, but then you're conducting voucher, you're actually, you're essentially taking local property tax money from the school. Because your state funding was netting off the zero. But now they're funded directly by the state. The next slide here, federal COVID dollar relief funding. Mrs. Kramiski had sent an email, uh, earlier this month and wanted to, uh, an article that she saw. Wanted me to kind of go through just what that looked like for Riverside and our funding that we had gotten through the federal stimulus dollars. As you remember, there was three rounds of stimulus funding. And so the out of front of education workforce has a dashboard on their website that you can go and pull any district in Ohio and see what they're allocated, what they have spent and what they have remaining left of those federal dollars. So this report is showing ours up here. If you recall, we had a broadband activity grant, um, we received fourteen thousand three hundred dollars. That was used to purchase hotspots during COVID for families who didn't have internet access. There was the coronavirus relief fund, we received two hundred and twelve thousand dollars from that. That's what we used to purchase sanitizer, masks, um, cleaning supplies, signage that we had to do. And also those wonderful desk shields that Dr. Kalas was so proud to purchase as my most painful purchase we ever made, um, back at that time. We used those federal dollars for that. Estor one was the first stimulus package we received, one hundred thirty six thousand dollars. What we used those for, we'll basically supplant the teacher salaries in our general fund. Because if you recall, back in twenty twenty, uh, Governor Bynum announced budget cuts to school districts. And he cut our state funding by just shy of a million dollars in May of twenty twenty. And we had to cut a check back to the state that we were already overfunded for the year. At the time, so we used it to, basically part of Estor one and part of Estor two offset that we basically lost a million dollars in twenty twenty and about half a million dollars in twenty twenty one. So about one point five million of the two million dollars we received from Estor one and Estor two toward basically offsetting that loss. ARP IDA was additional funding received to American Rescue Plan for special ed purposes, two hundred and eighteen thousand. Right now, I'm sure we spent eighty four percent, we actually spent all that just in our dashboard. Uh, we spent all our Estor two money and then the American Rescue Plan, Estor three money was three point, just shy of three point seven million. And then on, we have homeless funds of thirteen thousand that we've been struggling to spend for the last two years. Now, uh, on the ARP Estor funds, three point seven million, we also supplanted, uh, remote teacher salaries that our teachers were taught online. We generated a savings of about three million dollars that we transferred to our permanent improvement fund to use for future improvements. So when we talked about our permanent improvement fund having seven billion dollars, that, three million of that was from our federal stimulus. And we did some accounting and, uh, you know, we used the funds as we can, that savings that we created that we didn't necessarily need for general fund purposes. We set aside for facilities because we had the, um, the bindage showing valid for the campus. And so we didn't want to spend it on facilities if we were short of future level. So we're going to set those monies aside for future use.
Can I just say that we, we did that purposefully? Um, at the time, we talked about how we were going to spend those dollars and we moved that. If we had spent money on facility projects out of the Estor funds, you would, you would have had to use probation wage contracts. And we had to, we would have had to follow other requirements for using those monies because those are federal dollars. And so we chose to make it so that we can transfer those dollars to the permanent improvement fund without having to jump through those kinds of hoops and moves. So we already have those monies available. So I know that some people will say, well, you have all these monies in the PI fund, but we did that on purpose so that we could use these dollars and move them over there. So that we can have money for the facilities when we decide to move forward with some of the things and the initiatives that we have, that we would like to take care of when we get this facility plan done. And that is what we set those aside for. So we started this planning long ago, like to purposefully do that, so.
So the, so all the strings, additional strings that we prefer, funding also to be timed. The Estor two funds that we spent by this September thirtieth and that wasn't spent by next September thirtieth. If you do a construction project, you know, it'll take time. If you run a supply chain issues and things like that, you can't expend the funds by a certain date. Now I pay those funds back, but I still have to pay the contractors when they finish the work. So doing this way, it took all those, all those challenges away. And now it is, you know, now we're just going to, have to go forward, figure out how, how we're going to improve our facilities coming forward. Uh, we also use those, um, ARP Estor funds. So we did the last two years of summer school and the transportation and also part of recovery, online learning, things like that. So we just, we closed that through around six months. And those are almost used up at this point, so they're almost gone.
So it's a change.
Uh, you know, it's kind of, I like, I mean, I'm obviously a numbers person. I, I pulled up Cleveland schools, seeing obviously they're much larger district and, um, different, uh, income levels there. Their Estor one funding was thirty one million, their Estor two funding was a hundred thirty one million. Again, their American Rescue Plan funding was two hundred ninety five million. So they received four hundred and sixty four million dollars in stimulus funding, which we could go several high school camps. Also find out the, the dashboard does not, uh, does not show other grants that we received. For example, the welding lab grant we received was through federal funding that came through differently. You know, a thousand people welding lab, and we had that K twelve safety grant, we had a hundred thousand people. That's also one of those stimulus packages that we see that aren't reflected in the numbers. Uh, the next slide here, I'm sorry, I have several updates to go here. We received our, all of our reports from Bielaski, um, on our facilities for the campus in Lewis, Luckey, Melbridge. They also have the field house and transportation garage. Being a numbers person, I just went to the, you know, what's the big picture, what's the numbers are. And I had a chance to read through all of the reports and I shared it with the board and it's a lot to go through. And they prioritize items, um, based on is critical, is potentially critical, is deteriorating, is functional improvements and grandfather code names, ADA compliance, um, and the things are less critical. So looking at this, the, the total, um, cost estimate was ninety eight point five million. We did everything that was recommended in, in those reports. If you just look at priority one, priority two, which are critical, potentially critical, is like forty five million. Just to show on it, it's, it's, doesn't mean we're doing one thing or another, but like, you know, if you're going to do a project, you might have some priority one things, but you might do something that's priority five as part of that project. So it makes sense that if you're going to do this item, you're going to do that one, that's part of the project. I just want to kind of show what those cost figures are, you know, and, and for example, like transportation garage, one point eight million. I would never recommend spending one point eight million dollars on transportation garage, uh, to be able to be something that you would build, you wouldn't put that kind of money into a garage. It still would have the same space limitations that it has now, so. You know, you want to schedule a work session in the future to kind of go through those reports with Bielaski, kind of explain what they entail. So, um, Dr. Rattino sent you an email today, about later today, a doodle pool to try and get a date on the calendar to get us all together sometime after Thanksgiving. We got to go through that and explain what's in those reports and hopefully it's just time to, to read through everything too, just so we have an understanding of that.
And just to be clear, these are not any additional spaces, it's not changing space, it's all structural.
It's, it's not even having air in office buildings. Where air, air conditioning, it's just purely fixing the chemicals to better, yeah, roofing projects and fixing that, that everything it needs. And then we will share the, the, the dates when we come up to a consensus of dates by last week in twenty twelve. So if there are any questions, the report is kind of. We also got back our study that we had done by TVG and Design Architects, um, looking at our baseball and softball fields, as you recall, about the, you know. Baseball, softball boosters and also coaches and stuff that have, have had concerns about the conditions of the fields. And so we wanted to kind of add what that looks like. I've also shared this report with the board. They had six different recommendations in there, different ways to approach it. So I kind of summarized it here and I summarized it, uh, you know, to be fair, the type of line consideration is if you're improving the baseball field, you gotta be equally prepared with the softball field. So you really have to do both, um, that, you know, can't you do one and not the other? Uh, so different options they had, whatever, you know, if you went all in with new turf and field outfield, new amenities, you're talking four point six million dollars and you built baseball and softball. Now, in scaling back from that, if you just did ruin fields, fixed grading, things in the outfield, it's three point four billion. Um, the report also has considerations as well, because if you put in turf, once the turf is in, you can play on it. If you're putting in a natural field, you got way two more growing seasons till it's full at the end. So we had, like, you know, considerations as to the logistics of it and maybe you want field for two seasons, they could do certain things. Um, another option for this clay infield with grass outfield is two point seven million. Uh, ones is doing, you know, infield, not to the drainage, kind of more, not doing the whole thing, but just fixing some things, one point five. Uh, just doing the, the infield and just leaving the outfield where it is, one million thirty thousand. And then just doing some drainage and fixing about five hundred and thirty thousand. In that report, in the appendix, they have a whole breakout, so if you decide not to be fencing, it, it has all broken out, it's fencing, it's Medicaid, it's everything. So you can just kind of see in more detail if you want to scale things and change things. Um, another thing we asked you to do is, okay, if we wanted to decide to do like a turf field, can we do a multi groupist field? So instead of having baseball fields only for baseball, can it be multi groupist, they use it for softball, cross, soccer, things like that? Because there are places that do that, um, so that, the idea is here in the next couple of slides, just to show, this is just concepts to look at, things that we can consider. Something like this, now you wouldn't actually, they wouldn't actually put all these lines in the field, it's like little hash marks that you would, there's a special paint you can use to put on turf. So you would have to actually, but just for concepts, if you got a, a pool field like this, where you can have a full baseball, softball field with two outfield to overlay top of it, estimate is four point nine million, do something like that. And one thing we, we learned even with the football turf was the baseball field is much larger than a football field. You don't really think about it when you, when you actually see it, it's, it, there's a lot more turf involved with the baseball field. The next option here was, you know, this baseball and softball field to overlap some. So in this instance, you couldn't have a baseball and softball game at the same time, which is still kind of a separation, uh, between the two fields in some aspect. That's like a three point five million dollar project. And something like this, where they actually overlay the baseball and softball fields over top of each other. You have a pitching mound that you can move, there's a removable fence, something like that would be three point one million. Obviously, you obviously only play once for a time. So there's just the concepts that are out there, we will discuss in order.
If, if we did do something like this, we would have to put lights because it would have to be played if we're doing softball or baseball. If they, with the way the season ends, it would have to light it as well because we have night games. So I would see baseball then softball or softball and baseball playing and just move the fences.
Did they talk about, just, I was curious about the fences when, because I saw the lines for the outfield. I, how, any sense of how easy they are to just move around, install, uninstall and things like that?
So this is, so, yeah, it kind of came from the, I'm sorry, I mean, it's, it came from the, if you go to Cedar Point, two points that had this and they've, they've made a mint on it. They've got a big turf playground, a lot of them have the line, they have tournaments, they'll switch from baseball to soccer, um, really quickly. Like the fences just kind of roll in and they roll out, there's little, there're plugs for them, you just go and put, put the post in right away to bring the fences in and move them out. Or go to softball. So they run tournaments like it, like there all the time. So it's kind of that concept, um, and shifting the fields around and it can shift really quick. The other thing with softball and baseball is softball, in a concept like this, the softball field would have a shorter backstop and dugout. So we'd have to put a backstop in, they got kind of a temporary backstop as well. Uh, but they do make that kind of material, it is really easy to make that switch and switch it up. Within, um, I think within an hour, they were kind of saying, kind of make that switch and have her better. So even while they were warming up, we could kind of get in and make it so it was ready to go with the right preparation and all that. And the way that, that March is, um, when baseball and softball season start, this holds snow a lot better than any field that's there. And it always snows during the beginning seasons. It always snows during the beginning seasons, or at spring, uh, spring Ohio, as many know. So it's, um, in terms of playability, this is something that would make a little more sense, but it has to definitely come to a much bigger cost.
You're also committing your maintenance sale during those periods of time.
For, for that period, you kind of why, we'd have somebody who's there, kind of.
Last little project update, we had a construction meeting today. The contractor is hoping to get, they're hoping to do Melbridge over winter break, um, if possible. If they get the materials in in time and what are committing, they will attempt to do Melbridge over the winter break in two weeks' span. And then, uh, they will do part of the new, during spring break, and then the rest with Buckeye, the rest of the new, and campus, uh, for the summer of next year. But we'll find out probably in the next two weeks or so if, if those materials will be in, and obviously if you what are committing to this. Maybe a ten hour, not a ten hour, but a part. And that obviously not happening during school hour, it'll be over the break, uh, the week before. Uh, House No. 187 is legislation out there, um, to help the ease of property tax valuation increases. So there's, I think, forty-one counties in the state that are going through their, even re-appraisal or their three-year update in valuations. And so there are some counties looking at like forty-one percent increases in, in home values. Uh, so there's concerns about how taxes would increase, um, obviously depends on, you know, inside village would increase, water levels would decrease. There's this thing called twenty with the floor, or if you're at twenty with the floor, and everything kind of acts like inside village, where you actually would give, if you, districts have twenty no floor, there's a thirty percent increase in values. You can see a thirty percent increase in taxes. We're not at twenty no floor, so that would not be the case, you'd see a thirty percent, if we have a thirty percent increase in values, you'd see a thirty percent increase on that inside village. The rest of the water, um, until we hit the twenty no floor, which is just a calculation of how we might, may not be there in the next update, so. There's legislation that says, hey, instead of using the most recent, they do with, instead of using the most recent year, the last three years, they would average the three-year value. So basically, it'd be less of an increase, it's a temporary law, it'd be effective for three tax years and then back. So it kind of kicks the can down a little bit, I didn't kind of, even out the blip that you have in jumping values. That was passed by the House, it went over to the Senate, uh, Senate Committee right now, I forget which, which committee it's in, but it's kind of installed. They wanted to implement the fact that this tax year, which the tax will, you know, tax will be a year or two, so the tax will be from January. There was, there's concern that if they do pass this legislation, it's effective for this tax year as a provision of, uh, item. The counties that are going to those appraisals won't have time to, those updated, the bills get delayed, cash will delay, it'd be a big mess. So I'm, I'm not sure where they're going at this point. There was, at one point, they, there was rumors of an amendment to that bill to adjust the point of the floor and make it lower. But incurred by letter, I sent to the Senator, Representative Calender, is the districts are at twenty no floor already. If you lower the floor, that's an instant loss of revenue to those districts, and, you know, it will be instantly, it adds close to a two-billion-dollar valuation. If every mill of the floor dropped to two-million-dollar, you lost that district. So it kind of depends on, on each district's situation. Us, we're not at a twenty no floor, so it, it's, it's, the impact to us is much less than it would be for districts. So we're just kind of watching that legislation, see how it progresses. And right now, it's kind of installed up, so the House passed it, but the Senate hasn't really taken up yet. Um, and that's what you might have seen from like OSBA, things like that, send a word to kind of technical just to, to prompt you to send the letter. I tried to say, just be cool to say, just consider this for do this, consider this for do that, because it, it really depends on the districts, and it's really, you know, districts of Perry, Portland, will be like twenty no floor. It's a much bigger deal to them than it is to us. But then there's also, if you keep valuations lower, it also affects the fair school funding plan. It would generate more money for school districts to the fair school funding plan if your values are lower, less anticipated. There's, the cost of state might incur as well, changes, and how that all works out, it's, the calculation is way more complicated than I think. The, uh, five-year forecast is due in November, so the members' board meeting, I will provide an update, um, on that. We'll have the draft for the finance meeting, which I don't know the date of that, it's a little earlier this month, so I'm working on finalizing that. And then, as I said, the audit, audit has started, just make sure you have any questions. So that was a lot happened this last month, so I'll make sure you're updated on this. A lot of big ticket items coming to fruition there. Any questions or ideas?
Hi, this is the public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic, comments are limited to three minutes. The public participation? Yes.
So my name is Amy Zeran, I live in Concord, and I'm the Riverside PTA liaison for the county. So I'm not sure if most of you guys know that there's a Riverside Campus PTA. We're cutting here today just to kind of educate you guys on kind of what we're working on. We would love all the board members to kind of join the Riverside Campus PTA, um, that would be excellent. So that's kind of item one. We're working to move to, um, a PTSA, Mentor has a PTSA, and that would include the students. We, we met with Mentor and had a really good meeting. Uh, we had a meeting at six-thirty in the morning with the student council here, and it was the most lively meeting I, I had at six-thirty. Um, I thought it was excellent, we got some really good ideas from them. Um, we, the PTA organized a candidate questionnaire, which we sent out to all the candidates that are running for Riverside Campus PTA. And we put it on our website, um, just for educational purposes. Also, we linked the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum to that as well. Um, so that's up there, just for the community information. Um, some of the things that we want to work on are, um, supporting academic, like supporting the academic clubs to form like an academic boosters. Because like, there's band boosters, there's football, there's all the sports boosters, there's band boosters. So we thought we could come along and help the academic clubs. Um, and we're, we're working on some, um, kind of ideas. Student Council actually gave us a couple ideas as well. Um, and then, uh, one of the big things that we're working on, we met with the, um, student council, we're working on a reflections program. Uh, the reflections program is a, a, a national PTA program. Um, so the student council members have agreed to kind of be our boots on the ground, and kind of encourage their classmates to kind of do this optional, um, um, kind of program. And the theme this year is "I Am Hopeful Because." And they can submit, um, uh, something in dance, choreography, film production, literature, music composition, photography, or any type of visual art. So we'll be forming a judging panel, uh, the, the judging, the, the due date is December eighth, that they have to be turned into the judging panel. Then they'll, the winners will go on to Ohio PTA, and then if Ohio PTA judges them, yes, they'll go on to nationals. So, um, it doesn't, we're gonna award the winner some kind of gift card or prize, but there's no kind of award at the Ohio or national level, it's just the bragging rights.
Thank you for sharing all that. Any other public participation? Yes?
I'm Michelle, I'm also with the Campus PTA. Um, just to continue with what Amy was saying, the reflections program, we plan on doing a showing for all the students who submit their artwork, no matter what it's in, whether it's a visual art or if it's a performance. But we're gonna have a showing, and we're gonna come up with some sort of a gift or a prize. Um, also, one of our priorities this year really is to engage the students, and like Amy said, we're gonna transition into a PTSA. We did meet with the students, they gave us some great ideas on programs that they wanted to bring to the school. And the PTA would be a great vehicle for them to be able to reach their fundraising goals, because we are a nonprofit. We can have some sort of fundraisers that they can't have themselves. Um, also, one way to engage the students is, we have a student of the month program. And it's a little bit different from the typical, um, you know, athletic or, you know, best student. Um, this is, like, for this month, for example, it's the Fine Arts Student of the Month, that is for October. Next month, it is the STEM student. And then when you go into December, we have, and the Oscar goes to, and that would be for the best, you know, dramatic performance, sort of coincides with the play. But some of the themes are also the most inspiring students, most interesting hobby. And that's something we thought of that could engage the students and want them to participate in, um, the Campus PTA. Because we feel like, last year, we set it up, this year, we got our footing, we are able to really do some of the, the things that we want to do. And they could really shape it and, and do whatever that they want with it. Use it to implement, you know, different ideas and programs, they had some really good ideas, we spoke with them. Um, anything else? Oh, and the student of the month program, it's gonna have a hundred-dollar prize for the student that wins each month, and it's from the PTA. We also had a generous parent donor, and we appreciate that, so thank you to her. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public participation? Yes?
Um, Jessica Nagy, um, so I have been coming to these meetings. I'm a very, very active parent since I bought my house in 2019, and prior to that, uh, in my other district since 2013. Um, I can safely say since being extremely active, I'm a part of the PTA, I'm in PTO, I'm my son's homeroom parent, um. I've tried to formulate for this past week what I was gonna say. Um, I emailed the board, and I let the board know that there was the podcast where Mr. Fischel is, in fact, saying on record that he is trying to take over our schools and quote, impose his will. He has a super PAC, the Joshua PAC, and him with the lobbyists are trying to promote Denise Brewster and Beverly Schlero. And I can safely say since 2019, neither one of those women have been at any functions, they don't have children in the district, they don't know anything going on, um, whatsoever. And as much as I have disagreed with Chris Weiss, I can say that he has children in this district, and he is at every single function. Um, I've had some very difficult conversations with him since the forum. Um, and while he does owe the three women on the board an immense apology for actions he's committed, I believe that he can actually grow and learn. And he, with him having children in this district, I think he should be given a chance. And Monday, he is having, um, something at Morley Library at 6:00 PM, and I think that people should get to know him, because Mr. Fischel, you do not belong on this board. You are a blatant racist, and government does not belong in public schools, and I am appalled at what you have done, and what you are trying to do, and handpick two women that are not involved in the school. They are lying about our children, and I highly hope that people actually do their due diligence, because the three women that are actually sitting on this board have resumes that give them a seat at that table. They have children, they are involved in this district, and they put forth their effort. You, sir, have a high school diploma and nothing to show for it, and I am tired of what you bring forth. Your words and actions deserve to be gone, that is all I have to say, thank you.
Any other public participation?
I wasn't gonna say anything tonight, but I do want to say that my children did go to the Riverside School System. I'm a taxpayer here in Concord for the last twenty-nine years, and I'm a well-educated person. I feel that there's no reason that I wouldn't be able to have a seat at the table, because my children are not in school right now. And that being held against any candidate, I don't agree with that. And I know, um, this lady here can speak her opinion, and that's great, and I'm giving my opinion. I do not believe that you have to have children in the school system to either feel for what needs to go on in your community, or be part of what goes on in your community. And there are so many other ways to be involved than going to all of the activities that go on at the school. There's many things that can go on. So I just wanted to state the fact that I'm proud of the fact that my children did go here, but I'm also proud of the fact that I am a community member who takes care of paying my taxes, my, and that helps take care of the school district as well. And you seem to take my money, whether I have my kids in school or not, so, that's all I say.
Joy?
Yeah. Okay. Uh, as you know, I'm Chris Weiss, and I'm a candidate for school board this year, uh, subsequent to the League of Women Voters Forum. A lot of people have been reaching out to me, wanting more information, and wanting to speak to me, uh, in another meeting. So with that in mind, I set up the following two meetings, uh, coming up, uh, next Monday, October 30th at six o'clock at the Morley Library in the meeting rooms. And, uh, also the Concord Community Center, Wednesday, November 6th at six o'clock. And I wanted to invite Lori, Denise, and, um, Bev to come as well. I'm gonna reclaim my time if he's gonna talk, I'm at three minutes.
This is a campaign meeting.
Yeah, this, this is really, this is, uh, it was improper when Ms. Nagy brought that up initially, this is not a forum for that.
Yet you're interrupting his time, you're interrupting my time, so why are you even going to his time, Mr. Fischel?
But, let me just say, my.
Man, you go longer than the floor, you go longer than the floor.
Yeah, we continue to show.
I'm addressing him, you go longer than the floor, man, please be quiet. Mister, Mister Weiss, this is.
So can I reclaim my time?
Uh, well, I, I, are you gonna continue to campaign?
Well, I'm gonna talk about some information that's relevant here tonight.
Are you, are you gonna continue to campaign?
No, I don't believe this is campaigning, it's putting out necessary information, okay? Uh, anyway, many people have been asking me who's funding me and other candidates, okay? I'm not funded.
Yeah, we need to pause, so.
This is, you cannot.
You allowed Denise to speak for as long as she wanted to, so.
Well, but, but she's.
You're not the president, Hap, I asked her to help.
She asked me.
I did, okay. You're the president, but not.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not gonna shout over.
You're not the president.
All right, let me just say.
That's fine, but you do not have the floor, I was asked to help, so I'm trying to do that. So.
Amazing.
I, Mister, Mister Weiss, if, if, you know, if you wanna talk to.
I, I, this is not campaigning, this is information that's relevant to this, to this election, but it's not me campaigning. It's, it's just information about what the voters need to know about something, okay?
That is campaigning.
It is camp, it's, we, let's just a candidacy out of here, and I, I get asked, Mr. Hap, to step in for a moment, because I, as I'm being a candidate too, and I just wanted to say.
Fine, I'm not gonna shout over.
President, even though you're, you are a candidate, you're the president, and I'm, feel free to, to speak as you will as the president.
And I, I did, I asked, I can help step in, um, just from a neutrality perspective, so. Um, is there any other public participation at this time? Yes?
Uh, Denise Brewster, I just wanna, since my name came up, I just want to have a, uh, state for the record that I have had children that attended this school district. I currently have grandchildren in this district, I taught.
I guess after this last, just because of what we just went through, I just, to keep it fair, I guess I'm gonna ask if we can pause this kind of conversation?
Yeah, that's fine, I just don't want, um, misrepresentation of facts, and it's unfortunate it came up, because this is not the form.
Um, any other public participation at this time? Great. Um, that brings us to our consent agenda at this time, so first up is finance and audit. Um, this is, I'm going to go there one item, one more to follow up and discuss something, or you can just, okay, all right.
Um, we have a motion to put the items listed on the finance and audit consent agenda is recommended by the Board of Items A through I. Can I have a second?
My second.
Thank you. Um, I just first want to, uh, read the donations and thank the donors. We have a donation of pickleball equipment to a middle school from the County General Health District. We have sixteen-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and eighty-five cents from Parkside PTO to Parkside Elementary for the purchase of a new laminator. We have eighteen-hundred dollars from Parkside PTO to Parkside Elementary for the purchase of library books. We have three-thousand dollars from Parkside PTO to Parkside Elementary to purchase social, uh, science and social studies items. And we have two plasma torches, a cover, and filter valued at four-thousand dollars to the Riverside Campus Welding Lab from Air Gas Equipment USA. So thank you to all those donors, and I just want to reiterate that our PTOs do a great job of raising funds and donating things to our schools, and so, um, we always like to recognize their work. So thank you for that. Uh, is there any, uh, discussion on any of these? Is there any, discussion on any of these items? So I just wanted to ask on item G, the, the contract that we have with the coaching and support plan for our strategic plan, do we ever, are we ever going to consider, or do we ever consider putting out an RQ?
Yeah, that's a, um, so EPI is a, is a company that we use to write the strategic plan.
Right.
And it was kind of the natural role in this year, but I think as the strategic plan expires, we look to review, I think an RQ would be appropriate with a new vision of strategic plan as well, like, to come with it. Of, in this case, they were kind of the company who we brought, kind of worked in. So I think that's, that, that's appropriate for the next round, in terms of this round. They're, they're familiar with the district, the way the district works, and also the similar personnel, and they started some of this last year. Some of this coaching last year on a smaller scale, and just the opportunity to work with our, our leaders. And also, as a portion for me, they're kind of doing some, some anonymous qualitative questions for me, as, as the transition went through, so I can kind of need to feedback on, it's a 360 type review. But part of the asking our directors to meet with them, their first initial is, how are things going, where they see the strengths and weaknesses, and how can we support them? And they're kind of gonna validate that and get that back to me, so I can share that out.
All right, thanks. Yeah, like, no, no way or nae, you know, for, against, whatever, I just was curious, because sometimes it's always nice to have some new perspective. I know that certain individuals have been working with the district for quite some time, and maybe it's.
Just for the record, we did do that when we first, before we created the strategic plan, and doctors, and solicited proposals and.
We did do that.
So we did go through that process, we brought them on board to help with the strategic plan, and now.
Let's see. Yeah, that was the only question I got, uh. Is there any other discussion on any of these items? All right, well, that, can we call the roll, please?
Lori Knessky?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Scott Fischel?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye. Motion carried. That brings us to curriculum or programming.
Motion to approve the items listed on the curriculum and programming. Consent agenda is recommended by the superintendent, items A through C, can I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, any discussion? Terry Dunn, can you take it off, please?
Scott Fischel?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Lori Knessky?
Aye.
Motion carried. Buildings and grounds and operations?
Uh, there's a motion to approve the items listed on the buildings and grounds consent agenda item, or agenda, item A, is recommended by the superintendent, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Grassi. Any discussion? Terry Dunn, can you call the roll, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Lori Knessky?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Motion carried. Buildings and grounds and operations?
Uh, there's a motion to approve the items listed on the buildings and grounds consent agenda item, or agenda, item A, is recommended by the superintendent, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Grassi. Any discussion? Terry Dunn, can you call the roll, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Lori Knessky?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Scott Fischel?
Aye.
Motion carried.
So there's, uh, we have one other category that we need to discuss at this meeting, which is the, the board business, the OSBA legislative platform. There are two proposed changes, so I think a resolution to approve additional language on lines 191 through 194 of the OSBA legislative platform, to support legislation that allows students with disabilities on an IEP to have met all graduation requirements and who wish to continue their education, i.e. defer their diploma, to count as a graduate using the graduate formula for their school, schooling district. Is there a second?
I second that.
Mr. Flack, oh, just real quick, I wanna make sure, so do we have to approve the resolution and then the?
I, I said that it's a consent agenda, do both at once, but we, we, we already motioned second at once, we just do it twice.
Okay.
Perfect.
Fair enough. All right, is there any, any discussion? I, I do have the language here, if anybody would like to see it.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that people understand that we're not, we're not implementing these as policies, we're just recommending to the OSBA that this becomes part of their legislative platform and things that they advocate for. So I just wanna make sure people understand, like, what we're actually doing.
Right, and, and basically, as, as I understand it, and everybody, it's, uh, basically with students with special needs or, or, and IEP are able to continue on with their education for a period of time and defer their, their diploma. That's how I interpret.
So we are, we have an obligation to educate these students to age 22. If they meet grad, if they meet graduation requirements for some of the additional services, they will participate in social graduation and walk across the stage, but then they will return for job, job and medical training, they don't count as a graduate on the state border.
Again, and so, and, and it does not, so, the 20, the age of 22 is still kind of the cutoff. It doesn't change, so our, our costs are not, we do not increase our costs or anything else.
That is in the federal.
It's really an IEP team decision as to whether or not a student stays, but they have actually met all the requirements to graduate, but the team has determined that they need to stay on for additional training of some sort, most of the time is vocational training, but they literally could graduate, so that's what it's speaking to. Those students who really have met all the graduation requirements, but have been determined to stay on for most likely vocational training.
Okay, that's right. Are there any other questions? All right, can, Mr. Flack, can you call the roll, please?
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Lori Knessky?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Scott Fischel?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye. Motion carried.
Okay, and the next one is a resolution to approve additional language on lines 195 through 197 on the OSBA legislative platform, to support legislation that allows students with disabilities on IEP to continue their education, to maintain and support, supports provided by federal law. And so this does seem a little redundant, I don't know if it's the same thing, two different, two different proposals that, that we would adopt. And again, this is not necessarily gonna change things at Riverside, this would be what OSBA uses as their marching orders when they engage with the General Assembly, trying to promote the OSBA legislative priorities. Is there?
So I think this, 197, 195 and 197, Ms. Lanning, I'm sorry, is more about what you were talking about, right, that they can go ahead and march for graduation and still maintain their support.
Well, well, it's not so much that they can, it's that, that it doesn't, to count as graduate, using the graduation rate formula, so there's a different formula that we get rated on in terms of whether or not we've met our graduation requirements, and so there has been concern for many years that those kids are counting against us, so to speak, because they're staying on past their four-year cohort when they should be graduating.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, and again, this is, for me, this is, this is, we're directing the OSBA to, to promote legislation that would allow us to be able to do this kind of stuff.
The one most approved was, if they socially graduate, it counts toward their graduation number, but the next one's just, there'd be the supports that require federal law. So both changes are proposed, and when, is if one would change the way that. What would change the way that report card rate is being counted, the other would just say, we still understand we should support these students until their IEP team determines that they.
Right, it sounds like a supplemental to close a loop on anything according to the law, right, and regulation.
Right now, it's if they, if they're all to graduate and they choose to stay, it hurts our graduation.
Right, so.
And, and if we mark them, if we mark them as graduated, even though they've met requirements, if we mark and report them as graduated, we no longer provide them with any services. This, this also says, even though we marked them as graduated, we can still provide them with the services that they need as, as they may.
Right, and it's, it's almost more of a booking, you know, to not penal, to give the student the services he or she needs, while at the same time not penalizing the district, so that's.
It's kind of closing gray areas, it's redefining things so there's no gray areas.
Right, and any other questions or discussion?
I just think some, some of it is interesting, because I think some of that goes back to funding, because, because students who are older than the age of 22 age out of the educational system, and then they have no support system that's paid for them by the state of Ohio, and many, many people who are in those, in, in that area would then be qualified for Medicaid waiver services, and they would get paid for by the Department of Adult and Disabilities, whereas they don't qualify for Medicaid, if they don't qualify for Medicaid, there's no supports for them, and so this would allow them to stay within the school district for a little bit longer time to get supports that they need. That's just, from my perspective, to get services.
Well, and make employment.
Right.
To have the skills to be able to be, you know, competitively employed.
I think we still get a second, unless I missed it.
I'll second.
I thought, I'm sorry. I jumped in.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Thank you.
I'll make sure I got it.
All right, so, now any discussion?
But again, currently, none of this legislation exists, that mandates that we do these things, so this is just for OSBA to go and advocate on behalf of legislation that would support those things, so.
All right, with that, Mr. Flack, can you call the roll, please?
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Lori Knessky?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Scott Fischel?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye. Motion carried.
Is there one more? I think, I think I, I kind of went out of order.
He, he split the two, so.
Okay, we're good, all right.
That was a lot easier than last year's.
All right, so that brings us to a Board of Education update. Any updates, one more? Good luck to the football team.
I did hear from Mr. Hollis, I brought up, he did, he was, yeah, 3-1.
Oh.
That'll bring us to closing items, so our next building and grounds committee, next building and grounds operations committee meeting will be November 6th, 2023, at 7:30 AM.